I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic purported since one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So we just have to reopen the public hearing for Skyview Skylights because that was adjourned the last time we had Skyview before us. I don't need a motion to do that, do I? I do. Okay. So I'll make a motion to reopen the Skyview Skylight public hearing. I'll second. While it's over.
Aye.
So.
Can I just have a favor, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Since.
I'm gonna ask you for a.
My team isn't here. You can handle, did you do the approval in minutes?
No, not yet.
Watchtower?
That'll be very quick.
Are they here?
They're online. They're zooming in. You want a little delay, I take it?
Well.
Well, let me, let me, let me just go over how we're gonna handle the public hearing. I was gonna ask you or someone from your team to make a presentation for the members of the public so they get a feel for what the project is all about and the people online, and then get the comments of our consultants, and then have the public comment. So I don't know how long you want to speak or have to speak. We can go to other business if you really want the other people from your team to be here.
I would prefer it because they're not gonna know what I said.
Okay.
And they're gonna probably repeat.
All right. All right. So let's go then to the regular agenda then. I don't have to close anything, do I? Okay. So I'll open the, the regular meeting, and the first thing is approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any questions from our meeting of June 29 on the minutes?
I wasn't here, but I was, I watched it all.
Susan, thank you.
Nope.
Nope.
So I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. So we'll go to the Watchtower issue. We received a letter, and the Watchtower people who are online will also comment on this. We received a letter to extend one of the conditions on our latest resolution of approval, which was done back in April, which had a condition that expired on August 15th. And Watchtower has requested an extension of that. So at this point, I'll turn it over to either Brian or Keith to explain what you're requesting.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for having us a spot on the agenda this week. As noted, we are removing trees off the site, but when we look at our schedule, we don't think we're going to make that August 15th date. We are keeping within all the other conditions, the nine to three, only five trucks per hour, no left turns, so we're staying within all those conditions. But we need an extension on that date to get all the trees off the site. So we felt that September 15th would be a reasonable date to conclude that. So that would be a one-month extension to what we, what was in the April 4th resolution.
So you have started to remove some of the trees?
Yeah, yeah. Took us a while to get going, but we've got a good system now. And, but again, you've mentioned, feel free to return to the board if we weren't comfortable with that date, and we don't wanna push, push any of these other, you know, conditions. We wanna make sure we stay within what the town is allowing. So we felt 30 days would be, would be, give us some breathing room there, so.
Okay. Just for everybody's benefit, I'll just quickly read the specific condition number five, which we will propose to extend for a month today. It reads, "Construction vehicles shall be permitted to use as residential entrance within the town of Tuxedo for clearing and emission control activities between 9:00 and 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, Friday, with a maximum of five trucks exiting the site per hour to remove trees. The entrance shall not be permitted to be used for construction vehicles on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. This shall be permitted through August 15th, 2022, and shall be revisited by the Tuxedo Planning Board after that date if additional time for such activities is required." So I'll make a motion to extend this for one month. If anybody has any comments or questions about it before we do that?
Yeah, I have a question. So one month, you feel is adequate?
Yeah, yeah, one month, one month is adequate on that. Unless Keith has an additional comment, that's what we, that's what we felt was comfortable for the letter that we sent in.
Brian, let me ask you one thing. After September 15th, then you have all the trees out. What is your plan then? Because you also cannot use that entrance beyond September 15th unless you come back to us with what your plan is then. Are you going to have the other entrance completed by then in Ramapo?
We, we do have a permit for that entrance, the temporary entrance in Ramapo. We do have a permit for that. We've been waiting to implement that. Orange and Rockland is supposed to raise the height of the power poles, the power and telecom above that entrance. We have to raise the grade in order to put that temporary entrance in, and we can't raise the grade comfortably enough and use that as our construction entrance until that aspect is done. But we anticipate being able to put that entrance in in Ramapo as soon as possible. We don't have to do the final paved entrance. It's, it's a temporary construction entrance. So we have that permitted. And with site plan approval, as we mentioned in our letter, with site plan approval, June 28th, we're free to put that in as soon as we can get the wires raised. So we anticipate being able to use that entrance not too long after that September 15th date.
Okay, that, that sounds good to me. And I'm, I'm sure you understand that if it is not completed, the Ramapo entrance, you would have to come back to us again.
Yeah.
Beginning of September, you would have time to do that with your plan. You know, we need another month or, or whatever it might be.
Yeah.
Okay, you understand? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll be free to, we wanna continue communicating as we are to make sure you understand what's going on at the project, so you're in step with, with the work that we're doing there.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. So again, I'll make a motion to extend this for one month if nobody has any questions.
Continue.
Extend the, the approval to September 15th.
I have a question if the public is allowed. Didn't, at 6:33, start in mine road.
Okay.
History removal is gonna be completed by September 15th? Is that my understanding?
That's mine, or is that, I think that's what he's saying.
Is that correct, sir? Brian?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't quite catch that. What was that?
Your tree removal process is gonna be completed by September 15th?
Yeah, yes, that's, that's our, our schedule.
Because a few months ago, I did speak to one of your representatives, I think his name was Jeff. I, you guys sent the letter, and I sent an email back to you back around March, I believe it was, when we were discussing the road itself. When you talk about that Ramapo entrance being opened up, if the tree removal process isn't finished, are you gonna allow tractor trailers to turn left out of that entrance and come down Sterling Mine Road towards Greenwood?
If it's in Ramapo, we have, we can't do anything about that. You would have to go to the Ramapo Planning Board Building Department or something. That's, that's beyond our jurisdiction.
Well, that's, that's, again, as, as the chairman stated, that's up to the Rockland Highway Department. They have jurisdiction of our use of the vehicles in their right of way. So we're, we're deferring to them on our use of that entrance.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add something?
Sure.
Just so the board and the applicant are clear, the way that this is going to occur, presuming that the board grants this extension, is it would be an amended approval since the date was actually in the condition specifically. So it would just be amended approval, and you would go through the process of signing a revised resolution.
But I would make a motion for that resolution to be drafted.
Yes.
That we would approve.
It was clear what you were intending, yes. I just wanted to, in case you get a resolution, and then we circulate it out to the applicant, they know why they're getting an amended resolution.
Okay.
It's just that date that's gonna change.
So we can approve that resolution tonight?
Yes, you can.
Yes. Okay.
All right, so with that, make a motion to extend it. I don't know if we have a second, you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think you're all set for another till September 15th, Brian.
Okay, thank you, Chairman and members of the board. Appreciate that.
Good luck on the, the new entrance.
Thank you.
Okay, the only thing that's left at this point is Skyview Public Hearing and then our review of the study.
Mr. Chairman, when I was on, when I was on the other side, on the public side, through your video system, anybody that talks out here.
Need to use the mic.
Right, it's, what I pick up is from here.
Yeah.
So anybody that's close to that mic here, fine, like this whole table, the consultants, yourself, but nobody from the applicants or anybody.
Okay. So now that the rest of the Skyview team is here, let me just reiterate how we're gonna handle that. I'm gonna ask either Dan or anyone from the Skyview team to make a little presentation for the members of the public, both currently present and online, as to what the project is all about. Then we'll have the consultants' comments. Then we'll go to members of the public, both who are here in person and who are online for their comments. So with that, Dan, if you wanna start, or Norman, or?
Just grab the mic, Dan.
Yeah, Dan, if you could.
Give us a way to focus on the TV set and hear you.
It's on.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members, staff, members of the public, my name is Daniel Kraushaar. I represent Skyview Skylights. I have an office at 300 Airport Executive Park, Suite 307 in Nanuet. We haven't been for you, I believe, since January?
February.
Actually, it's in your name, January.
February.
And see, at least one new member, and I think, I don't know.
Well, that's irrelevant.
Okay. So we showed you at that meeting in January, a greatly reduced building plan from the one that we originally came before you with. At that meeting, after reviewing everything, and with the input of your consultants, the board determined to re-approve the negative declaration, which you previously granted on the larger building, due to the fact that this building would have so much of a lesser impact than the one that you had previously granted negative deck on. We were then directed to go back to the ZBA on the original application with the larger building. We got many of the variances, but not anything that would allow us to build what we had originally proposed. We listened to the public, we listened to your board, we listened to the zoning board, and we greatly reduced the building, greatly reduced the impact. We moved it away from the neighbors, we moved it away from PIP property. This is all in addition to reducing the size of the building. The zoning board then granted the additional variances that were required in order for us to comply with your zoning code, and sent us back to you to seek approval for two things in particular. One is a special permit to allow for the use that we're proposing. This is a change that was made to your code very recently, I think, maybe two Decembers ago at this point, one December. And we added a lot of vegetation. We, Norman met with a couple of the neighbors, and we ultimately once again received the approval that we needed before the ZBA. In addition to the special permit for the assembly use that we're proposing, we're also seeking site plan approval. There is something that I'd like to ask the town planner, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, I know you're, been in your spot many times. Pinch it. I did it this morning, actually, a CDRC. But the village has wetlands ordinance, and do we know whether or not the property is impacted by any wetlands that would require an approval from the board?
Yeah, my understanding and response to the engineer's report is that some of the elements of the proposal are within the wetlands buffer, and I think that might be the, might cause it to require a wetlands permit. I haven't done, looked in, in the books or anything like that to make a determination on that for tonight, so our usual planner on the, on the job for the board, I'll be back next week, so can't answer it today.
Okay. I am totally doing this off the top of my head. I would like the board to consider, nothing's gonna be approved tonight, I think we all recognize that. We do not have a GMO from the county. We have issues, we have reduced them greatly, that the town engineer brought up, that Valerie brought up impermanence, we're gonna be able to deal with it. We've been meeting and speaking with New York State DEC, Orange County Department of Health, Orange County Housing Department. Am I missing any more?
Those were the three.
Okay. Those conversations have been going, how would you describe it? We may have to revise, and obviously, our engineer can get into nitty-gritty of it, but we may have to revise the location of the well that we have proposed on what's before you. Once again, we'll get into that a little deeper. And at this point, I think I'll turn it over to Ken to talk about the engineering aspects.
Hi, everybody. My name is Ken DeGennaro, civil engineer from Rooker Engineering. So yeah, we were last before the board in January. We received the variances from the ZBA after that, after that meeting. The variances that were received pertain to reduction in parking. We were down to 88 spaces, and that was actually a variance that was received the first time. Retaining wall along the east side of the property for retaining wall height, and front yard encroachment into, I think about, it's slightly less than what was approved originally, so that was a reduction. And building height, we were approved for 45 feet. That was the same as the original plan. And development coverage, we reduced that number down to 47%. For the last submission, the, really the bulk of the change was a reduction in building footprint. We maintained the 50-foot rear yard. Previously, we had a 15-foot rear yard, so we reduced the building by 35 feet in depth. I believe there was also a nominal decrease in the overall length of the building as well. With that, we reduced the building size, and we just revised the site plan accordingly. It's a new grading plan, a new drainage, new utilities on the, on the plan. Furthermore, in response and comment from the ZBA, we utilized more of the grass, grass pave product instead of asphalt on the property. So the driving lanes will still remain asphalt, but the majority of the parking space is here, it's this cross hatch pattern, and on the west side will be the grass pave. We had a meeting with the building inspector for the interpretation of that product, and it's really, it's a wire, it's a plastic mesh that allows the grass to grow through. It's, a lot of times, people confuse that with the grasscrete product, which is like a concrete hexagon. You see that pretty frequently, and the grass doesn't really grow through that very well unless it's like super-maintained, and it's just difficult. So this is called grass pave, we've used it on the products, projects, and it, it works great.
Yeah, I think you're gonna want other applicants to use this in the future.
Yeah. So that also, you know, reduced the development coverage on, on the property. That was a big help. With respect to specific technical items, yes, we have been coordinating with the Orange County Department of Health with, with respect to the location of the well. The existing well from the original site plan is about 35 feet off the rear property line. That does not meet the current code, which requires 100-foot radius of ownership. We had a meeting yesterday, requested to investigate at least the possibility of grandfathering for this well, because it was on the previously approved site plan, not in that exact location, but within the 100 feet. And the reviewing party from Orange County just, it was, it was non-negotiable. So during that meeting, we did look at another location to the west of the building, which will meet the separation requirements from well to storm drainage and well to septic. And that would provide the 100-foot radius of ownership on both sides. There is also what's called the 200-foot radius of control, and that's not possible to be obtained on the site, because that would require a lot depth of minimum dimension of 400 feet. And the configuration of a lot is, is less than 400 feet. So in provisions such as that, you can apply for a waiver of that requirement. It's a slightly stricter construction technique, and you know, it's, it's, in our opinion, and after meeting with Orange County Health Department, it is achievable. So we're confident that the next submission will address county health department comments.
So you're gonna apply for a waiver?
Of the 200-foot radius of control. Yes, yes.
And you're optimistic that you will receive that?
I am. Of course.
It's not done till it's done.
Right, right, right. He didn't say it's a guarantee, nothing's guaranteed, but it's been done before, we meet the criteria, so we're, we're confident that it will be retained. With respect to the DEC, we have been coordinating with their office via email, and I believe the latest emails were circulated to the board perhaps today. They had some minor comments with respect to the endangered species, some additional construction techniques, techniques that they wanted to see implemented, and it's not an official document, that's the approval, but again, the comments are manageable, and we can incorporate that into our next site plan submission.
Are they gonna send something other than the email they sent today?
Yes, yeah.
Put that in an official letter?
Certainly. Yeah, they should, and we will request that. People forget emails. Never seen an email reference on a site plan, so make me feel better to have that in writing.
Do we need a permit?
I don't believe it's a permit. I think it's, they call it like no-taking?
It's a city permit.
Okay, so it's, it's a permit, it's not a permit. And last, we did receive more substantial comments from Orange County Highway Department about the entrance, and we reviewed them. We have not met with the highway department, but, you know, of course, they were technical in nature, you know, minor revisions will be performed this round, and we believe we addressed those comments as well.
Is that the site distance, correct?
Yes.
Can everyone hear him?
Because his voice turned a little bit.
So with that, we did update the landscaping plan, you know, which was robust to begin with, and it's, you know, accommodates the, the new site grading and what we are incorporating. One other aspect of the ZBA approval was to maintain a 10-foot buffer along the eastern property line. It's basically an area of no disturbance to save the trees that are in that location, the existing trees. So all of our planting would be offset from that 10-foot buffer, so we keep what's there and add additional vegetation screening. We have our landscape architect, Abigail Adams, and she can discuss that in more detail.
Okay. Can you hear me? All right. I need to use my microphone. All right, good evening for the record. My name is Abigail Adams, registered landscape architect, owner of A2 Land Consulting out of New Fairfield, Connecticut. The major changes that are affecting landscaping, obviously, are the regrading and change in the wall location, allowing more of the existing vegetation to remain on the east side, which is what Ken was just talking about. Also, the fact that we have reconfigured the building, which is allowing a lot more green space behind the building here. As we are, we're obviously proposing a very robust planting plan. We have a very extensive streetscape that's happening along Sterling Mine Road. We have a combination of large street trees that are going in there. We have maples and pin oaks and some ornamental trees. We have some fringe trees, some eastern red bud, and then we have an extensive planting of both evergreen and deciduous shrubs, and a significant amount of perennials and ornamental grass is happening along there. We also beefed up the planting that we have along the western and eastern ends of the building here. We are continuing to maintain the living walls here and the two front facades right there.
Does everyone know what the living wall is? I do. Did you bring that elevation view of the front of the building with you tonight?
I don't know if we have that. We don't have that one. We don't have, we didn't bring that one.
Okay.
We have the old one.
This no longer applies, it's changed?
I mean, we're just scaling down, same idea. Yeah, it's the same concept, if you'd like.
Well, if you have the old one, it gives some flavor.
Thank you. Along the western edge where we have, we have a buffer of a Nomo mix between the, I wanna say grasscrete, because that's what we always use, so I'm trying to call it the different name. Grass pave, thank you. The grass pave, we're just, it's like same Xerox, right? The grass pave's right here, then we have a Nomo mix, and then we have a small wetland buffer happening between the wetland area where our disturbance is going to be happening. Then, as I had mentioned here with the Nomo mix, we also have that happening along the back. back of the building. This will be mown once a year, just for maintenance, but it just allows for grasses to grow up. There's no fertilization, no need for anything real. Once it establishes, you just leave it alone. It's good for wildlife foraging and habitat, et cetera. Then, I'm just gonna switch sides here. As we move along the northeastern corner here, again, we have a large buffer planting happening along the top of the retaining wall here. Along the slope on the eastern side, we proposed an erosion control mix, same concept as a Nomo mix. It just has a little bit more variety in the species that are in there. There's wildflowers, grasses, that are going to control any erosion as stated in the name along the slope. Thanks so much. I'll pop right back to that in a second.
That's true.
Along the eastern side, right along the top of the grading work that we're doing, again, this is all natural vegetation that's remaining. We have our limit of disturbance line right at the, along that limit of disturbance, we are proposing, proposing an extensive evergreen buffer. This is a mix of firs, white spruce, Colorado spruce, and green giant arborvitae. The proposed install heights for this material are eight to ten feet. I think I have that wrong, I think it's actually ten to twelve. For the firs and the spruces, they're a little slower growing, and then seven to eight for the green giant arborvitae's that we have mixed in here, which grow close to two to three feet a year. They grow very rapidly. Making sure I cover up right from now. Just overall, one of the things that I wanted to note is that we have a total of approximately twenty-six deciduous trees that are being proposed, thirty-one evergreen trees, sixty-five deciduous shrubs, ninety-four evergreen shrubs, and then hundreds of perennials and grasses. So, as I mentioned at the beginning, we consider this to be quite a robust planting plan, and it's, it's always nice to have clients who really support that. We want this to look good throughout all four seasons, right? We're really trying to get material that's gonna be colorful for all three seasons, a lot of evergreens, so that we have that green during winter, and really create a nice streetscape that's happening along here. And again, to try and be respectful of the neighbors here, create a really robust buffer that we have on this east side. So, back to the living wall here. So, this, this just gives an idea, we would obviously, right, here and here. And this living wall would, we would work with a consultant to help us design this. It would be able to have evergreens and be colorful, basically have four-season interest. Again, that's what we're looking for. We don't want these to be blank walls. We really wanna bring the landscaping into the building, outside the building. We really are just trying to encompass the whole site with, with green, just to make it look beautiful. I think that I've picked up all of the major points that I wanted to discuss, unless...
Can you show the one with the different types of trees?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. We just mentioned that before, sorry. It's not in this one. It's on the other. So, the board that we're pulling up right now just has images of some of the plant material that we're using. This was from the last submission. I did not update it much, but we're using, utilizing a significant amount of the same material. So, this, again, you can see all color of the, the maples along with the shape and this sort of a berry, the green pillar oaks, the red bud. It just gives, it gives you an idea of the array of plant material that we're using and all of the colors that we're trying to bring in, and then also the different textures that we're looking for between the evergreen, the all different, different kinds of evergreens, the ornamental grasses, and just the perennials.
I mean, this is something you would typically find in residential neighborhood, not in a commercial building. The, the expense of these trees, the height of these trees, the beauty of these trees, the different color that we're blending together. It will definitely make a positive impression.
That's our intent.
Okay, thank you. I don't believe you signed in.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will do that.
No problem. Okay, thank you. So, with that, Bill, if you wanna go over your comments?
Sure, thanks. Again, my name is Bill Brady. I'm with Nelson Pope Voorhees, whose planning consultant, and I'll summarize some of our comments on the most recent materials that were submitted. And we spoke with the board as a token, testifying.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Sure. He has a mic.
We have the mic here, so we won't overdo it. Thanks.
That works better than this.
And some of this was talked about, the applicant related to agency reviews. Comment letters were received from the Orange County DPW and the PIP. It's recommended that as a condition of approval, the applicant needs to address any outstanding comments from both agencies. Again, that was already discussed earlier. Related to site circulation, the applicant provided a revised truck turning plans for a single-unit WB-67 truck. The existing turn movement at the western moving area is very tight for that type of trucks. The truck turning movements no longer approaches into the two subject parking spaces. Related to lighting, the report notes that an updated lighting plan was submitted and meets the requirements of Section 98-39, outdoor lighting standards. Related to landscaping, the applicant has provided an updated landscape plan, and the plan provides numerous features that are considered adequate. Then we jump to comments on water. Again, as discussed about the wells, it's recommended that this, the board's approval related to water be a condition, the Orange County Department of Health's review approval be a condition of the board's approval. It was mentioned about threatening endangered species in the review of New York State DEC. It's recommended also that completing the consultation process with DEC is incorporated as did conditions of approval. And then, related to wetlands and the grass, not grasscrete, grasspavers. And that all parking areas are curved and graded to direct runoff, to catch basins connected to the underground detention system. Stormwater will not be discharged, discharged, discharged directly to the wetlands. It's recommended that a condition of approval of the plan would require, require all stormwater be treated within the wetland buffer, and any changes to the proposed design require further review from the planning board. So, that, again, that's a quick summary of our, our report from NPWA.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I provided the board and the applicant with written comments last week. I'm just gonna go through in an overview fashion. If there's any questions you may have on something that I don't interest, please feel free to answer it. So, just in terms of where you are in this process, the applicants indicated they were last before you in February. You set a public hearing at the end of that meeting. In March, you adjourned that public hearing. I don't believe you received any public comments at that time, and you adjourned it because the applicant was still working through their ZBA variances, which they've described to you. They received those variances in April, and then they made a resubmission to you for this evening at the end of June. So, again, their purpose here tonight is the public hearing, and I believe the applicant is, has indicated about the GML-239, so it wouldn't be possible for the board to take any action this evening. This requires site plan special permit ARB. I believe it also may require a wetland permit, which I'll discuss towards the end of my comments. The special permit, last year, we had discussed the special permit criteria, and at that time, there was an indication in correspondence that you would provide a narrative that addressed those. So, the applicant owes you a narrative just addressing that criteria, and that would form essentially the underpinnings of your decision relative to the special permit. So, I think that's important that you have that.
I agree.
In terms of dimensional requirements, they received a number of variances from the ZBA. My written comments include a repeat of the ZBA's conditions. I believe there were ten or eleven conditions that the ZBA had. I just wanna make sure those don't get forgotten. And I did have a question, and I didn't see it addressed in the ZBA decision or the applicant's submission correspondence, and that's with regard to the height. Now, I know we got a variance for the building height. The height limitation on the accessory water storage tank is fifteen feet, and that would be the top of any dome. Last year, I pointed that out in my comments, and I didn't see that it was addressed in the ZBA's decision. So, did they make any interpretation on that?
We performed revised calculations. The architect and I were within capital engineer, and they were confident that within that footprint, that's shown in the plan, the height would not exceed fifteen feet.
Including any dome that you may have?
I believe so.
Okay, all right. So, what I had recommend just to address that would be that we get some sort of detail, construction detail in the plan. The plan identifies where the tank's gonna go, gives you the dimensions in plan view, but there's no detail that shows you what the tank looks like in profile or anything like that. In terms of site plan, we talked a little bit about this evening. Orange County Department of Public Works got back to the applicant last week. There were two main items I wanted to, to address for the board's information, and the board did bring up the one, and that was with regard to site distance. So, the applicant meets the stopping site distance requirement of approximately three-hundred-and-fifty feet. That's the distance you need to stop a car, so there wouldn't be a collision. They don't meet the intersection site distance, and that's the distance that somebody stopped at the site would need to see to make an informed decision, so they wouldn't slow down or cause any disruption to oncoming traffic. The county's determined that they need to meet that intersection site distance requirement, and that's four-hundred-and-fifty feet. I'm not sure if the applicant has thought of a way to increase from three-hundred-and-fifteen to four-fifty, four-forty-five, but that is a hard drive, in my opinion.
Sean, that's the intersection of Long Meadow and Sterling Mine.
It's the intersection of the applicant's driveway intersecting with Sterling Mine.
Okay, it's not the Long Meadow intersection?
No.
That's a county requirement.
That is the county's requirement. The county has jurisdiction over the applicant's driveway. Also, the county's requiring the construction of a left-turn lane. I'm not sure if the applicant is aware of that, the left-turn lane requirement from the county?
We did see that. So, yeah, I, we'll have to, we were widening the pavement on our side, so we'll work through the details with Orange County.
Okay. Just wanna point out to the board, in terms of architecture, my understanding of the architecture plan is you've now relocated the loading over to the westerly side only. So, that's why the applicant's showing the large vehicles taking deliveries and pickups from that side of the building. There is a material handling room on the other side, and the site plans included a truck turning plan to access that side, but it was unclear whether that side's gonna be utilized frequently or maybe occasionally for pickups and deliveries.
It would be similar as the previous plan. It was just reversed, so the one side is for the drop-off of materials, and the other side is for the, you know, shipping out.
Okay, all right. But you will never need to get a semi-trailer over on the easterly side now?
No. The, 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 the,
I think you can avoid that because you're proposing sprinklers, but it would require an exception from the building inspector.
Okay.
The grass pave, applicants discuss that frequently. There was a note that in order for that to hold traffic, there's gonna need to be a soil evaluation. So, I would just recommend that be performed before the plans are signed so that if you need to change the site plan, we could. Applicants discuss water. I will mention that they provided you with a brief letter from a well driller and a lab test for E. coli and coli bacteria, which was negative, which is good. But Department of Health, it's gonna be a public water supply, they're gonna require full Part V analysis. So, it's a little bit more stringent. In terms of sewer, I still haven't received anything with regard to the product you're looking to use. So, in New York State, jurisdiction on sewer systems is divided between local, DOH, and DEC. Since this is under 1,000 gallons a day, it would be local, provided that it's a conventional system. The DOH keeps a listing of approved systems, but I didn't see the applicant's product, system they were proposing, on that list. In which case, then jurisdiction would default back to Department of Health. So, the other option is if there's any question whatsoever, we have the ability to locally refer it to the Department of Health. So, it's however you would want to handle it. You don't need an answer this time.
Okay, we'll look into that, yes, absolutely. Obviously, you prefer just to deal with that locally.
I figured as much, but then we're gonna need something from you that says it's approved by the state, okay. ARB? It's before you for ARB approval, there is some inconsistencies with the drawings. The last submission had drawings A1 through 7. And now, the new submission you have is drawings A1 through 3. Those three drawings aren't the same as the three drawings that were originally submitted with the same numbers. So, in order for you to understand what you're approving, that should, that should be reconciled. And I also think that in accordance with your past practice to make it easy for the building inspector, you're probably gonna want a list of building materials, specific materials, so the building inspector doesn't have to try to, you know, review the drawings to figure out if they comply. And then lastly, is the wetland permit. This is a new requirement under your code. It's a local permit for wetlands. I don't think that a permit application's been submitted or that, whether this hearing was published as a wetland permit. So, I think it would be to adjourn this. It's, given you some background, and again, Claire, she handles a wetland permitting, she's more familiar with it, but I do think from my reading that you do require that permit.
If you're, we're not doing any construction.
You're in the adjacent area.
We're in the adjacent area, which is showing the plans. And if portions of the park or lot are in the adjacent area, there's a disturbance there as well. So, it was an impression that we didn't have that permit. The exact manner in which we obtained it, you know, were applied for, you know, adhered to requirements, even public buildings. I think I started to say it. Would it be possible to, let's say we get continuation of public hearing for the pro site plan and special permit, to set a public hearing if needed. We still have time to find out. For the focus meeting along with the content of the two public hearings.
My feeling would be to close the public hearing tonight on the three aspects that we've addressed and just have a public hearing in August for the wetlands. That's-
It's up to you.
I mean, I don't see that why we need yet another public hearing. There's been ZBA public hearing, we have the public hearing tonight. I think we can not have another public hearing on these same items again. There's only so many times we can regurgitate this. So, that would be my- Anything else, Sean?
That's all, Mr. Chairman, unless the board has any questions.
Okay. Well, I want to get to the board questions after we close the public hearing, okay? But I do just want to do one more thing before we get to the public. I received a letter today from the Orange County Partnership from Connor Eckert. And I believe Mr. Eckert is here. And I'll refer to you to go over this letter. It is in favor of this project, I'll just say that, and I'll pass it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, everyone has information. Great, you may have a change. So-
Microphone?
Microphone. Thank you so much. So, my name is Connor Eckert, I'm the Vice President at the Orange County Partnership. And the partnership for the last 35 years has advocated and worked to grow commerce and industry in Orange County. And tonight, I am here to speak in favor of this project for a handful of reasons. One being job creation. This is an opportunity to grow what we consider in Orange County to be a strategic sector. Fabrication, light manufacturing, the creation of quality jobs in Orange County in tuxedo. Additionally, this is new commercial tax ratables, and that benefits everyone. It benefits the local community, it benefits the county at large, benefits the school district. That is an absolute positive with this project. But even, I would say more interesting is the amount of time and effort the applicant, the consultants put into making sure the building is compatible with the community. We do industrial projects, commercial projects across Orange County. I've done them across the northeast. Seldom do they look like that and take that much time with landscaping, with, you know, the amount of trees and shrubs they're gonna be planting. So, hats off in that regard, absolutely. And it seems like, my understanding about the company and the consultants, they've worked with the community, they've worked with this board to make sure we're at a place where this is a project that the community can be proud of, that they've taken into account the comments of the board. And this is also a small business in regard that has grown tremendously and will ultimately be a great taxpayer, a job driver. And I'm sure we'll see his employees stopping at local businesses and, you know, eventually looking to move to the community and pay taxes seriously. So, those are the gist of my comments. Happy to answer any questions, but on behalf of the Board of Directors of the partnership, we support this project. Appreciate the time, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sir. Floor is yours. I think you should-
I have some stuff to say.
No, I'm sure you do.
Do I need this?
Well, there are some people online.
My name's Catherine Caffetter, they pretty much all know me from the zoning board, do you? Couple of questions regarding demolition of that building. How would that take place? What would be the procedure for that?
I think demolition would be standard. We'd have to get all the permits that are required locally in front of the county health department. And it could be with heavy, heavy duty rig. Just can't play any, as it is, try to recycle as much as possible. Shit to the appropriate CD location.
Last stop, which is not just possible.
Yeah.
Again, last stop, which is not just possible. Concerning with dust, with the demolition of that building?
Sure.
Anything else that might be living in that building?
So, we don't have to do the mics back and forth lines?
Just grab that and hold it next to you while you talk.
So, yes, that is a typical requirement for demolition permits. You have to bait the building first, you know, eliminate the rodents. And there are also requirements for dust suppression as well. So, permits would be obtained for that, and of course, the construction would be enforced locally. But, you know, obviously, it would, the intention is as fast as possible for the demolition, not have that be drawn out.
And correct me if I'm wrong, if there is any asbestos in the building, that has to be removed first?
Yes.
When was asbestos-
I don't think there's-
I don't think there is. But-
There still has to be a check.
A check, correct. Yes.
With a drone.
Is there a roof, is there a roof on that building?
Yes.
Sometimes shingles have asbestos.
Okay.
So, you're gonna check?
Yes.
Yeah, it's highly unlikely.
Also, during construction, what are the hours of construction going to be?
This board will consider that. And like we've done with Lodge Tower, we're not allowing them to use that entrance on weekends or national holidays.
Well, the zoning board already said there'd be no work there at all on Saturday and Sunday.
That's a condition that we will put into our-
The zoning board has said that.
And there'll be hours a day also, right?
They can't start until 7:30, I believe, nothing on that site.
And there's town-
I'm just running through these guys.
There are two different concepts. One is, I think the zoning board was addressing that we can't have work in the building once it's constructed on the weekend. But in terms of building the building, it's not even done.
Yeah, I don't think they had any construction work.
Well, that's why I'm here, just trying to see what's going on. I just know what they had.
Certainly take that into consideration.
Parking for the construction workers, is that gonna be provided on-site?
It's gonna have to be. It's gonna have to be. They can't park on Sterling Mine.
I'll just, you know, I'm just-
No.
Believe me, I asked the zoning boards a lot of questions too. Some of the stuff I got kicked back because they're saying, no, that's, I really don't care, oh, it is, I'm just throwing down my list. I apologize, but I didn't have a definition of who does what. I've been in construction for 34 years, I'm a union electrician, I've worked on everything. Residential, commercial, industrial, hospitals, parking garages, data centers, schools, you know, healthcare facilities, things like that. So, I kind of know how crude construction work is. You can't even park somewhere and just leave your garbage laying around, that's why.
Should we make him the constructor now?
I knew that was good.
Yeah, and then also during construction, if there's any type of dust, you need a little bit of dust control too like that, it's gonna take place in the summertime.
Good for our building.
Yeah. Well, you're still doing grading on parking lots, things like that, right? You had that going, you have to maintain some of that. You're gonna be adding all these beautiful trees, that's gonna cause a little bit of disturbance to the ground. It's just not gonna plop in and drop grass.
We have fencing though.
It will be dealt with professionally and they do that, do all construction side, not the middle. But I mean, I've seen in that, I know, certain construction sites that-
Mr. Chairman, could I offer a suggestion perhaps for the board's consideration?
Sure.
So, the applicant's prepared a SWIP. In the SWIP, they could include dust control in there. And that would actually be enforceable. The applicant would be responsible for doing inspections and their own self-certification of those, but also would be enforceable through the DEC. So, it does turn into a problem. The applicant would have to deal with the DEC, I'm sure they're not gonna want to do that, so.
And addressing the left-hand turn lane, you're doing that through the county, I believe, right?
The county DPW, their road, it's a county road.
Is that through a meeting or is that through emails and things like that 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 gets done?
Most likely-
I just like more information on that, about how you're gonna accomplish the left-hand turn lane there. You know, coming down the hill, I'm assuming, to turn left into your property.
Typically, it's not done via meetings such as this. It would be done by our office revising the site plan and making a new submission to their office and then them reviewing it and issuing additional comments. However, such as what we did yesterday, sometimes it's easier just to go up and meet with their consultants and reviewing, you know, personnel and, you know, have the discussion over a table. So, it's, it could be a combination of meetings and, you know, back and forth with planned set submissions. We'll see, hopefully-
By left-hand to my drive, terrible as it is, if they see an extra lane, they're definitely gonna try to pass me in a left-hand side lane. They continue to do. Coming down the hill.
The county's recommendation, I don't think it would extend as far up as to where your driveway is. But it will have to be shown on the site plan, obviously.
Correct.
And the zoning board, we talking about a 25-foot buffer zone there?
10-foot.
No, I thought he said 25.
The zoning board?
I thought that's what, you said there was a 10-foot canopy and I thought that, first he said that there would be, I asked for a 25-foot buffer, Norm and I talked about.
The ZBA provided a 10-foot, says the applicant should provide a 10-foot wide, no disturbance, no build buffer along the easterly property line prohibiting any disturbance of truckers upon land, including its vegetation.
Because Norm and I talked about 25-foot buffer down in your shop that night. For the problem professionals. Well, the professionals don't have to live in that building. I do, you know, and the zoning board's attitude was, oh, you have leady trees there, you won't see anything, what happens in November, you know? Now I'm looking at a building that's gonna be, I don't know, 60, 70 feet closer to my property line than it is now?
So, with respect to the buffer, the discussion at the ZBA was 10 feet. The majority of the bigger trees are within that 10-foot easement or buffer. So, again, those trees would remain and we have roughly one.
Because there's an elevation change between my property and your property where my backyard is.
Sure.
If you look out, I can see that building today. From my backyard, I can see that building from the side of my house. And from the front of my property, I can see that building, even with those leady trees there.
The difference will be, yeah, nicer building than 60-foot building now.
Well, the difference is, it'll be, I don't know, 60 feet closer. So, it's gonna be more magnified, it's gonna be only, you say only two and a half feet taller. You know, it's gonna be wider.
It, it is, yeah, the footprint of the building is bigger, you know, and it is closer, obviously. But that is also the point of the enhanced landscaping plan. And we acknowledge the ground slopes down, you're up on the hill. The landscaping that we're proposing is downhill of you. And there is no landscaping that could be planted that's going to totally shield the building. That's not realistic. The intent is to create this stark contrast of that building with respect to your property and help, you know, add some green in that corridor in between. So, while it's not a 25-foot no disturbance area, the bulk of that additional land between the 10 and the 15, I'm sorry, between the 10 and the 25, so that 15-foot extra that we're talking about tonight, that's nominal regrading and significant planting. So, it almost essentially is.
It would be almost that of the buffer zone and not that.
Yes, yeah, the current grading plan, we, and we specifically, you know, coordinating that with Abigail, you know, we can't have all that planting on a steep slope. So, it is relatively flat in that area to accommodate the proposed planting.
So, that retaining wall would be quite the same, about 15 feet off of my property line?
The retaining wall? No, no, the retaining wall's 50 feet to 80 feet off the property line. So, here's, yeah, this is 80 feet right here. And again, it's a retaining wall dropping down.
Right, because it was what, 13, 6 or something like that?
Yeah, before, and, you know, it changes in grade, you know, as to accommodate the existing and proposed grades. But, right, so this is 30 scale. And we have about 48 feet at the one corner. We have about 48 feet in the one corner of the retaining wall to the property line. And that's because the retaining wall's not parallel to the property line, so that's the closest. As we get further south on the property, it goes up to about 80 feet, the retaining wall to the property line. And then we add about another 60, 70 feet from the retaining wall to the building. So, the building's about 150 feet from the property line.
All right, that's a little bit further than I had thought, Norm. I thought it was, because I thought we talked at one meeting, there's an existing retaining wall there? And I thought at one of the zoning board meetings, we heard that the building was coming up to that existing retaining wall. Where's, where would the well be? Or where is the well?
The existing well is right here. Yes, yeah, so that was the one that was tested and suitable. However, it does not meet the location criteria from Orange County. So, the new well location that we discussed in that meeting would be on the west side of the building, further away from your property, closer to the wetlands.
Now, 2005, 2008, when this original building went in, I believe it was the DEC or Orange County, something like that, they do what I consider a stress test. They had, they drilled their well, then they came to our house and a couple neighbors and they put like a, some type of meter down there. Say again?
No.
No, it wasn't a purpose, that's for the stuff there. And they ran the well constantly for like 24 hours and they were measuring the rise and fall of the water usage.
Yes, and the county may require that. Their well is gonna be a public water supply well, so it's under the jurisdiction of the county, not this board. The county could require a stress test. Typically, a stress test is when you, just like a stress test you have at the doctor where they increase how fast you're, or how steep you're running, you would increase the pumping capacity of the well to figure out where the limit is on that well. I don't necessarily know if they would do it for this well. It would depend on the subsurface geology, surrounding conditions, you know. And if they've already done that, they may revert back to the studies that they've already done on this site.
Well, if they relocate the well, then it's a new well, if they have to drill a new well, then the whole study would be-
Not necessarily, it depends on the subsurface geology. So, if this was a sand and gravel- Excuse me?
Smaller, but on the proposed one.
We have not designed the actual well, that would come later in the process, but we just know the usage is less than what was approved previously for the old use.
Significantly less.
Significantly, yes. And again, the assembly use does not require water. The water demand is only for the employees using the, you know, working there.
And on the east side here, you have a loading dock for-
This is the unloading side.
This is where you're bringing all your raw material in?
Raw material is on this side.
On the west side?
Correct.
And the finished product comes out here?
Yes. Oh, no, wait, I have that backwards. This is, yes, that was the original plan, I'm sorry, that's my mistake.
I saw you flip.
We did flip it, this was, so this is drop-off.
So, the drop-off is on my side?
Yes.
For lack of a better, east-west, I could do that too, whatever's easier for you, but.
Yeah, yeah, I guess everything comes here and everything comes out here.
And there'll be no outside stores here?
Correct.
It's prohibited.
I'm in a new meeting, I gotta read that.
No, but the ZBA, that was one of the conditions of the year as well, and it's also under code.
I don't have any more tonight, so, but if I be at your next meeting, I might have a little more. Thank you.
Sure.
But just, just so you know, the next meeting is not going to cover these things, it'll cover the wetlands only.
Okay. The wetlands, let's take backfill it in, where the existing building is.
I can't address the specific of that.
No, Norm didn't do that, somebody else did, back in 2006, he did that.
Sir. I couldn't read, I couldn't read your name or your-
I'm sorry about that. Yes, my name is Steve Gross, I'm the Orange County Director of Economic Development. I work for the county executive here, speaking on behalf of the project along with my friend Connor Eckert, friend and colleague who did a really wonderful job outlining the project here tonight. You know, I'm a 50-year-plus Orange County resident, lived here my whole life. I've seen quite a few changes in our county over that time. But also, as a parent of an 18-year-old, I want to make sure we have jobs in our county for our young people in the future. That's the one number thing that drives me to bring industry and commerce and businesses into our county. I don't want to visit my son in California or Washington or South Carolina or some other place in the country. You know, these kind of projects really give us an opportunity to keep people here. They bring jobs to our county, they bring tax ratables, as Connor said. And, you know, the proof is in the pudding when you talk about tax ratables. We've actually reduced the county property tax rate by 7.2% this year, the first time in over a decade that that's been done. And that's a result of the economic growth we've had in our county, more people paying into the tax levy, more businesses coming in. And that's what this project is gonna give the opportunity for. So, we want you to take an open look at this project, keep an open mind. We think it's gonna create good jobs for the county and we support the project. We're gonna work with our county departments, make sure we have all those approvals in place and effect. They need to be properly done, I think this group realizes that from what I've heard today. And seeing this project with a wall like this, a living wall, is just phenomenal. I hope we get to see more projects like this in the county in the future. It really changes the landscape, it changes the vision and the view of our county. And this is gonna be a good project, so thank you for your consideration.
Good, thank you. And we have Supervisor English who may have a comment to make, so we can- Ken, if you can unmute yourself and give us any comments you might have. You can unmute him, can you? Okay, yes. Mr. Supervisor? There he goes. Can we show you connecting to audio at this point? You're unmuted, now, now you're muted again. He's just on the phone at star six, right? He's just on the phone at star six, right?
I don't think so. I don't think he's on the phone.
He could call in, right? Maybe that would work. What do you think?
He's MIA.
I mean, we know he's in favor of the project based upon his previous comments. You know, his texts, any comments he has, right?
Sure.
He can write any, can write any comments.
My apologies, Ken, I, I don't think we wanna wait any longer. Unfortunately, you're having some difficulties. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing as it pertains to the application for special permit, amended site plan, and architectural review. Can I have a second? On favor? So now, I wanna poll the board and see if they have any questions of our consultants or the applicant. So Justin, why don't we start with you?
Sure. So my concern from when we first saw this project for a while, I think the building's still a little bit large for the site, but organized through zoning appeals board is granted, variances, so this is the building size that, that we're working with now. So to that end, you know, the, the amount of planting, planting that I see around the site, I, I think is great. I like to see the, the buffers and, you know, the efforts to, in whatever way that we can, kind of ingratiate this building into the forest, I think is, is a good move. And, you know, I, I think we're going in the right direction there. But in, in terms of the architecture review, I, I think the drawings are a little light at this point. Are, are we gonna, are we expecting some more drawings, like some elevations or, or updated renderings with the new building size?
There is some confusion as to the drawings that have been submitted. And while we're on that subject, I already asked the landscape architect for the next submission, we wanna see calipers of any of the trees that you're planting.
Yeah, that's all, um, sorry, they dropped it, that's all on the, the plant schedule.
It is, okay.
We have it all listed.
I apologize.
No problem, it's in the plant schedule, I believe the last sheet of my, my stuff.
And I don't know if you got a copy of Mr. Hoffman's memo? We gotta get you a copy of that memo, cuz he talks about the number of trees based on the caliber that you cut them.
Right, I think that's what he's talking about. Thank you.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, are, are there gonna be updated drawings submitted for elevations and materials and all that kinda good stuff?
Yeah, we only want, we only want specific colors, you know, roof color, siding color.
The building, do we have the ability to bring in, like, materials?
Samples would, yes, that would be nice, that would be best.
Yeah, and kinda, the, on the, the character of the building, it's a bit... It's very commercial, you know, but I understand that the, the, the purpose of the building is more, you know, assembly, it's not really gonna be visited by a lot of customers. You know, it, it, in my opinion, it's a little bit loud for the, the setting, you know, with the, a lot of glass and big signage, that, that kind of, like, elements that you might see on, on Route seventeen or something.
Uh, this is the old version, we didn't update the smaller building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we have a comment on here, so... Okay. Okay, well, I guess when the, when the new design is ready for us to look at, that, that would be good, you can comment on that.
It sounds like everything in pro. You know, we don't have it to show you time exactly.
Right, this, this off of me.
Thanks, Justin. Susan?
Yes, I too want to echo the sentiments about the use of the plantings and how much thought and creativity and care and concern for the area has gone into it. So beautiful job, thank you for supporting that. Beautiful. I have a question regarding the endangered species, I saw the D E C report, and it said there would, there'd be required to be some education as a piece of their approval. And I just wanted to know, would that be written into anything that, that we would be referring to? Like Sean, would that go in as something we'd have to see and know that it was actually taken care of?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. So you've already concluded seeker, you've adopted a negative declaration, so it finishes seeker.
So there are general conditions at the back of your permit, I'm sorry, at the back of your resolution that you typically don't go over, but they're always there, the applicant's required to comply with those. One of those is that they have to get any outside agency permits that were required. So they couldn't proceed, they couldn't get a site plan. If the site plan was actually signed inadvertently without getting those approvals that were required, then it would be voided. So the applicant has to get all those approvals before.
Okay, so the D E C, they'd be responsible to the D E C for whatever is...
That's correct, yeah.
I understand.
I, I think the way that it's structured with the D E C, the applicant says it's like a permit, but it's not a permit. So they've said essentially, if you do these things, you do these items, you comply with this, then you don't need taking permit. That was my reading of it. So I think they're gonna do those things so they don't need a permit.
Okay. That was really my main question. I'm just excited not to see the dump that's there now and see something nice every day.
Good, thanks, Susan.
With regard to drawings, I would like to see that buffer more in details, like you showed it on a top view. So we can like do something like that on a side view, where it can expose like the neighboring properties and get a view of like what your plan is versus what it all looked like when you're all done and all them saying like, kinda give me an idea of what they're gonna be looking at toward your building. And maybe possibly another angle to whereas what they see... An elevation chart from the east looking west. With regard to your lighting, it's a big thing with me. I don't like where it spreads into other neighboring. Obviously, you have nothing to the west and nothing really in front of you, which would be north. So if you illuminate a lot in the south and in the east, you're gonna be kinda light blending into other neighboring properties. And I'd like not to see that happen when this, with this, when you're all done with this project, with the lighting.
Sure, so would you have a lighting plan that shows the wood candles, the intensity of the lighting? And so it's, obviously, it's concentrated in the parking lot, and it tapers down to, you know, zero point zero, you know, well before you get to the property lines on the side and in the back.
Right, the biggest problem with the lighting plan when they talk about those numbers is the bleed off, the reflections, they don't talk about that. They just say, okay, the beam pattern's gonna be like this, and it's gonna go down. But they don't talk about from here going up. So we need to address that so that I don't have to worry about a bleed off with the neighboring properties. Other than that, I can't wait to see this. This is, it's a beautiful project. And a lot of work is going into this, and I appreciate your patience.
Great, thanks, Ned.
I'll just be quick, I think that the plantings are a home run and definitely much more than you would see in, in commercial properties. And the living wall is, is, you know, a big deal. Yeah. It's, you know, it's not an easy thing to achieve, so it'll be interesting to see. But I think having that in two places is very special. I'm not so much concerned about the scale, but it'll be good to see the, the updated rendering when it comes. I do think the, you know, sort of the light pollution, I'll call it, that Ned was talking about will be important to understand the kind of three-dimensional perspective of that at night. And I don't really know the regulations on parking lighting in the evening, so I don't know, maybe there's a... Maybe there's a...
There is, yes.
Times sensitivities on that side that could be...
The, your code requires the applicant to extinguish the lighting one hour after the business closes and to not have it back on sooner than one hour before.
So that, that, that...
Correct, yeah, and the code does encourage motion detectors and things like that.
And I think with the rendering, you see in the building material, it will make it... It'll give everyone a better sense of what the building's gonna look like. Because renderings are great, but to be able to see the materials, I think is very... But I, I think it's gonna be a lovely project, project, and it's far better than what we look at every day right now.
Okay, thanks, Susan. Let me ask the two architects on the board, Susan and Justin. The living wall, have you ever done anything like that on any of your presentations?
Mostly inside.
Yeah, I've only seen it inside on pleasure separate.
You alluded to, in, in, in your presentation, it, it won't be brown in the winter?
Because that's, that's the goal, that it's not, that it's not gonna be brown. And it may potentially be that some of the material gets pulled out at the end of the season and, you know, evergreen goes in and some things switch out. We haven't gotten into that kind of detail, but it's not the intent, obviously, though, to have a brown wall during the winter, so...
Is there gonna be any ivy? Cuz ivy's green.
Yes.
That'll be part of that.
Yeah, sure, probably one of the, one of the materials in there.
I think if you think about it as, you know, fronts of buildings and they change the planting seasonally in some of the buildings, there's gonna have to be a certain amount of that on the living wall. But it, but I would think that a bulk of it's gonna wanna be... Yeah.
Yes.
Like the ivy and, and things like that, that will be green year-round.
Probably some ferns, things like that.
And if you, for the next time, if you could provide an example of an outside living wall that you've done in this climate, would be helpful also.
I would tell you, inside right now, there's very few living walls being built that are real plants. They're using, like, as you know, not fake, but, no, petrified. I mean, materials that are like, you know, they're dry, but they... Outside, that would not be a possibility, cuz they would just cinder.
They were living at one time.
They were living at one time. They were, they were not always fake.
Have they not been?
No, they're not.
Yeah, I have class.
I would love to sit out on a building, if you know of one, I'd just drive to look at it.
I, I don't think there's too many buildings.
I know there's one in, there's one on Main Street in White Plains, downtown White Plains.
Oh, good.
Big, big wall. But I think some of it may be artificial as well, so...
There's a mix, we are doing, we have a retail project in the island that we're doing foam material movable planters just for maintenance purposes.
And they've come a long way.
They've come a long way.
I don't have anything else, Phil?
I agree with the other board members, the vegetation sounds like it's gonna be really, really beautiful. What, I'm just curious, what is the growth rate of, on average, of that? I mean, is it, is it gonna start to grow fairly quick, or are you talking about many seasons before it reaches its full?
The trees themselves, the deciduous trees, we're putting in like a two and a half inch caliber.
Are you talking about the walls specifically?
I don't think so.
Well, one of them really.
The trees, the evergreens, I don't know.
Oh, no, we actually have four inch caliber, these are pretty big, pretty big-sized trees that we have going in along the street scape, so they're gonna be pretty significant in height to begin with. And, you know, tree growth rate, it depends on the species, I'd have to go back and look. But I, you know, I'm thinking, you know, six to, six inches to a foot per year for the deciduous trees, maybe more depending on the species. The evergreen trees, I'd say they're probably typically one and a half feet per year, give or take, except they're really giants, which I mentioned, so those are, you know, anywhere from one to three, but typically on average, two to three feet. The shrubs, I'd say within two to three growing seasons, those are typically getting to mature height, except, you know, some of the much larger shrubs, we're not putting it full-size, so they're gonna take a few more years to fill out, but small material like that really matures within...
Does the living wall have a sprinkler system?
It will, it's gonna have to have some sort of irrigation system, UV lighting potentially.
And Sean, don't we also have to post security?
Yes, I believe so for the landscaping.
One other question, what, what is the expected completion date of the entire project?
You can predict...
Let's say from...
Three-year, five-year, oh, two-year?
Let's say from when you get a building permit. When you get a building permit, what is the duration, have you gone that far yet, or...
So, I would probably say twelve to eighteen months.
I would say eighteen months.
Big part of it will be proved at, so, right, I have six to eight months, they have, if you have it, then be the front, it'll be a big part. Side and front, that'll be a little difficult part. That's not that big, so, no question.
What about your operation?
Our operation moving over.
How long? I mean, once the building's erected, then you have, I, I would assume machinery and equipment has to be set up. Oh, that's fast.
I've, I've been to the facility, there's not a lot of equipment that they use other than drills and...
Oh, no, no heavy equipment.
It's like organizing, really, kind of, like...
Yeah, racks, it's...
Assembly and function.
It's not any heavy machining equipment.
Very well, I, no other, no other question.
I'm sure, I'm sure you've considered this, but I'll bring it up anyway. Deer issues, you know, there will be deer in this area, so you just have to consider that in your selections.
Right, right, we may need to do some kind of deer maintenance program.
Or deer resistant.
And how the, the tri-con, the floor, which deer cannot walk on.
It's like a grading.
It's a good idea, I can assure you, deer are a real challenger, aren't you?
Okay, so from the perspective of the applicant, you're clear as to the areas that have to be cleaned up for the next time?
Yes.
And hopefully you can make...
Do you wanna set a tentative?
Yeah, I, I was gonna get to that. So you will apply, I assume, for the August first meeting? And hopefully have all or most of these addressed by then. So for the public hearing on the wetlands permit, I'll make a resolution to schedule that for August first. You have a second?
I'll second that.
On favor? Now, Sean, who's gonna make the call as to whether that's necessary? Is it gonna be Valerie, is it gonna be you, is it gonna be Kelly?
I would defer to Valerie, but I think if the applicant reads the code, I think it's quite clear that it is required.
That is required, okay. And if you're reading of it... And if your reading of it conflicts with that opinion, you can talk to Kelly or you can talk to...
As far as on the side, it's always better to overdo it than to underdo it when it comes to approvals. So I have no objection.
Okay.
Just applying for it, letting the board make its decision. Presentation, that's all.
Okay. I have one other question. What are the criteria for the special permit? Is it anything different than from a site plan approval?
Yes, it is. Usually, it's operational and usually it considers items like noise, dust, things of that nature, things that you could have, that you could want to have a condition perhaps that extends with the project. And you utilize, in your code, you see it a lot of times around when you have uses that may be okay in certain areas. So for example, this use may be okay in certain areas under certain, but not throughout the entire zoning district. So you would consider the joining residential properties and things like that.
So there would have to be, in effect, two approvals, site plan and special permit?
That's correct.
So since there are operational issues, maybe the next time, a little presentation as to what your operation entails. So we can address those.
Sure.
Right? And that gets into the hours of operation and so on. So we'd want to, we want to hear a little bit about that.
Okay.
Okay.
So it shall be written, so it shall be done.
Okay, thank you. So if nobody has any other questions, comments, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, I...
She did that. Oh, did you get that?
I thought I did. No, that's wrong. So, motion to adjourn, all approved?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, everybody.